Such a good crowd tonight. We appreciate all of you coming out tonight. Hello, Ms. Hazel. It's good to see you again. At this time, we will call the meeting to order. This is our regular board meeting of April the 23rd. So at this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. First up tonight is approval of our agenda. Can you all hear me all right in the back? It picks it up so easy. I feel like I need to holler, and I don't want to do that. Approval of the agenda. Tonight is approval of our minutes. And we did have two meetings: a regular meeting and a special board meeting for budget, correspondence, public forum, special recognition, finance, facilities and operations, superintendent report, legislative update, and then the board will go into executive session. So at this time, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman, so moved.
A motion has been made by Ms. Evelyn Enfinger, seconded by Mr. Folk, to approve the agenda. Are there any... Oh, was that Hodges? I'm sorry. Dr. Hodges. Didn't mean to leave you out, Dr. Hodges. Are there any further questions? All in favor, please say aye or raise your right hand. We have a working agenda. Approval of minutes. We'll do them separate. March 19th was our regular board meeting, and that was all in your packet.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 19th.
Motion was made by Ms. Evelyn Enfinger, seconded by Ms. Jenny Enfinger. Are there any further questions? All in favor? And then the special budget board meeting was April the 10th, so we also need a motion for that.
Madam Chairman, so moved.
Motion made by Ms. Evelyn Enfinger, seconded by Mr. Folk. Are there any question... Was that Ms. Dr. Hodges? Y'all, this is echoing, and it sounds just like you doing it. Sorry, Dr. Hodges. I'll kind of look over at you next time. Sorry. All right. Motion was made by Ms. Evelyn Enfinger, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Are there any other questions? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Miss Stacy, was any correspondence? Okay. We do have someone tonight to speak. I think everyone in the room knows him. Mr. Lewis, if you'll come forward, and we'll just ask you to introduce yourself and your address as well.
I have a statement to read first. As provided by Board Policy BEDH, Public Participation, the Board allocates time during each regular board meeting to provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Those individuals who have requested an opportunity to speak by completing the approved card will now be recognized and given an opportunity to come forward and speak. The public is asked to keep in mind, and this is a limited public forum, which means the Board reserves the right to stop a speaker and/or end the public participation session for violations of policies governing the public forum. Speaker will be allowed up to three minutes. All speakers addressing the Board should identify themselves, give the name of the organization you present, if any, and state the particular matter they wish to address. No speaker will be allowed to raise complaints or concerns directed against any individual employee or student of the district during the participation session. Any such concerns or complaints should be presented to the superintendent or board chair directly, rather than presenting during the public participation session.
Thank you very much. My name is Tim Lewis, 613 East Main Street. And you... First of all, I had a dentist appointment, got shot all up in my right jaw, so if I muddle through this, please, please excuse me. And then you said about offering a concern. And so, it's not a concern at all, but it's simply a statement to Chairman, Chairperson Ms. Hughes and the rest of the board members. I want to thank you for your... And the superintendent, for your strong support, verbal support, written support, for your opposition to the consolidation with DD4 and DD2. We like to call it a takeover, forced takeover, but that's the first thing I want to say. And then I want to thank the community for their overwhelming support. We had two hearings, and it was standing room only. And so I really want to thank you about that information. A little update for the public is that you know that that it was a proposed draft bill to consolidate. I spoke to the office of Chris Murphy, who was one drafting the bill yesterday, and he has not filed it yet. And the session is over May 8th. So there's a good chance, can't promise you anything, that it's a good chance that that bill will not be filed this year and not until the new session, which happens approximately in August. So what that says to us is really, what are our next steps? What are our next step? Because this is not going to go away if we just come out to a meeting and voice our opinion and don't do anything else. So we have until, again, the coming session. I don't believe it's going to be filed. I really don't believe, because it's just not enough time. So if it comes back up again, it's going to be in August. So what are our next steps? First of all, as a community, we have to continue to voice our opposition. And that means continue to reach out to our legislative delegation. And there's a list of them. It's been in Dorchester Eagle, who are legislative delegation. You can go to the county website and put in their delegation, and it comes up that information. Those who know me, please call me if you want to know how to get through that. But we need to continue as a community to voice our opposition to our legislative delegation, that we don't want this. And we've talked about all the reasons, and none of them make sense. So even today, there was an article that... An op-ed article that I wrote that was published in the Somerville Journal-Sea. And I want to thank them for doing that. But again, it's the continual letting the public know. We cannot sit down on this issue. We do not need DD2. I know what y'all do as teachers and staff, and it's an amazing job. That doesn't mean we don't have more work to do, but we don't need DD2. The next thing is... And I like to say that as a school board and school administration, we need to continue to promote the excellence in our school system. I know there's a lot of great things. There's more stuff to do. So we need to continue to promote excellence in our school system. And that's very important. So that's number two. Number three, as a school board, I would ask that you provide some type of written statement. I think it's a legal brief. It's a statement of official opposition. See, all this stuff doesn't matter if you don't write it down. You know, if you don't write it down and say, "We are opposed to this," or "We have reasons," as a school board, I'm asking you to just not wait on laurels. Let's continue to keep our foot on the gas and continue to pressure. I... Not that I think it's working. I know it's working. I know it's working. I've gotten emails and conversations, even today after the article from folks down in the Somerville area, agreeing that there does not need to be a consolidation. So, in closing, let's look at next steps. Let's just not say, "Okay, we did it." We got them on the run. Let's continue to voice opposition. And as a school board, whether it's a legal brief or some kind of statement, official that writes it down, we continue to put the pressure. Because I believe the community is going to support you. Based on what we've seen before, the community is going to support you in this. Because it's the best thing for our school system and for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. A little bit further in the agenda, we will give you a little update on most everything you just said. Next up is special recognition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I get to do the fun stuff. Dorchester School District 4 is delighted to continue its Everyday Hero Employee Recognition Program, celebrating the exceptional individuals who play crucial roles in the success of our schools. These hard-working employees often operate behind the scenes, ensuring a smooth functioning of our schools while contributing to the education and well-being of our students. Monthly, we shine a spotlight on these dedicated staff members, offering our appreciation for their unwavering commitment. Each Everyday Hero receives a certificate of appreciation as well as a coin from the superintendent, a token of the district's deep gratitude for their remarkable service. DD4 is proud to announce Ms. Shelley... Come on up, Ms. Shelley. ...as one of our April Everyday Hero recipients. As part of our ongoing Employee Recognition Program, we want to celebrate Ms. Shelley, nominated by Principal Kennedy and backed up by everybody. Ms. Shelley is described as a constant hero within the school community. Her smile is contagious, and everyone loves her for her dedication to all of her students and staff. Ms. Shelley always goes above and beyond, taking on extra tasks to help students and parents in need. Ms. Shelley also serves as... In the DD4 Multilingual Learner Program, where she passionately advocates for students learning English as a second language. Her support, warm personality, and willingness to do whatever it takes make her a cherished member of the Woodland Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Shelley, on making a difference every single day. Let's give Ms. Shelley a round of applause. Dr. Stevens, can you come on up? And then if her family can make their way, as well as her Ms. Busby, any Woodland High School, Woodland Middle. Just kidding, y'all gonna do it in the back. Congratulations, Ms. Shelley. And look how many people showed up for her. Ms. Shelley, you're loved. You're loved. Next, we have Ms. Shalita Johnson. DD4 is proud to recognize Ms. Shalita Johnson of Clay Hill Elementary School as one of our April Everyday Heroes. Known for her very calm demeanor, professional excellence, and kind heart, Shalita is a cornerstone of Clay Hill Elementary School, who I added to the team. Just wanted to put that in there, Ms. Lemon. Nominated by Principal Lemon, Ms. Johnson serves as the school administrative assistant and receptionist, often the first face that students, parents, and staff see when they walk through the front doors. "Shalita sets the tone with her warm smile and welcoming presence," said Principal Lemon. "Her ability to stay calm under pressure and handle tough situations with grace makes her an invaluable part of our team." With exceptional organizational skills, Shalita ensures the front office runs smoothly like clockwork, handling calls, messages, and visitors with efficiency and warmth. But beyond her role, she supports discipline matters, assists students with academic tasks, and contributes to the school's overall positive environment. In honor of her extraordinary contributions, Ms. Johnson, we want to nominate you as an Everyday Hero. Come on up, Ms. Lemon. I guess I'll let you get this one. Come on. Congratulations, Ms. Johnson. Next, we have Mr. Alexander Simmons. DD4 is thrilled to recognize Mr. Alexander Simmons of Williams Memorial Elementary School as one of our April Everyday Heroes. Mr. Simmons, I heard they love you over there. Is that true? Okay, that's good to know. Nominated by Principal Ruth Memm, Alex wears many hats throughout the day. In the mornings, he supports the cafeteria team with food prep and personally delivers breakfast and snacks to the school's youngest learners in pre-k and kindergarten. In the afternoon, he partners with the custodial team to ensure the building is thoroughly cleaned and sanitized for the following school day. "Alex Simmons is a dedicated worker who always has a smile on his face." Oh, you got it. Said Principal Memm. "He's a vital part of WMS, often lending a helping hand, answering questions, and creating a positive environment for everyone." Thank you, Mr. Simmons, and congratulations on being an Everyday Hero. If we could have all of our Everyday Heroes come back up for a picture with everyone, we would greatly appreciate it. Family photos will be taken in the back with the logo. Let's give our Everyday Heroes another round of applause. So we're going to shift gears just a little and now acknowledge one of our phenomenal students. So if we could have the curriculum department come up? That would be great. Ms. Brennis, that's you too. Come on up. Everyone's trying to hide behind the podium like that. Tonight, we have a very, very special recognition of one of our students. You've seen him multiple times before, but he's here today to acknowledge some extraordinary work that he's done. John Donato is an eighth grader from Woodland Middle School. He is the regional winner for the Low Countries Regional Spelling Bee. He advanced to script Spelling Bee in Washington, DC, representing top spellers. I need y'all to hear this. He beat students from Berkeley County, Charleston County, Colliton County, and Dorchester County. And we are so proud of him. So John Donato, if you can make your way up. John, all I can say is, "WOW." Wow. Come on up, John. Let's give him another round of applause, please.
Yeah, come stand by me and make me look better. They're so proud of you.
Great job, John. And we wish you nothing but the best in Washington, DC. Let's give all of our recognitions or honorees a big round of applause and congratulations.
Well, congratulations to Ms. Shelley, Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Simmons. And it's good to have a Mr. Simmons tonight. I think it's been mostly women coming. So, Mr. Simmons, we appreciate everything that you do. And I think I heard someone say, "These ladies keep you straight," but it might be the other way around. And John, we are so proud of you. You have been up here many times in front of us with so many achievements, and we're so proud of you, and you really make our school district. We're all very proud of you. Thank you. Next up is finance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I only have the monthly board report tonight, so you have those in your packets. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, board members? Thank you. You're doing a great job. Thank you. Next up is facilities. Mr. Martin?
Any questions? Good night? All right, we've got... We are on the home stretch of our playground projects, which is very exciting. And hopefully, next month, I'll get Mr. Lakin to do some drone footage, because that really shows it from an aerial view of what they look like. And we have some before footage and after. So we have a playground open at each one of the schools. Williams, their three playgrounds are done, but they're not open, because we have two of them still need fencing. And we've added in some other items for sidewalks and stuff to make them fully inclusive for wheelchairs and everything. So it's really impressive. The aerial footage will show that next month. The Student Summer Work Program, we're excited to continue that this year. So we're looking at possibly ten students, two for the IT Department, eight for operations, because that went so well last year, and the students impressed us so much with their work ethic. So that's... Food and nutrition will also be hiring students. St. George Administration area over here, we've successfully moved in operations. The Maintenance Department, Transportation, Food and Nutrition, Curriculums moved over. Couple other areas, so we only have like two spaces left to fill. And this area will be done, but that really centralizes our Operations Department instead of having people sporadically everywhere. And we're giving the IT building back to the IT folks, because they have a lot of stuff that they need to store and operate out of. Some Technology Department updates. So Harleyville now has their main entrances with access control. Clay Hill and Williams Memorial are coming onboard. So that will pretty much have all of our schools with their main entrances with the badge access, which is a big deal in our security of schools. And we have other doors that we're adding in, but getting those main revolving entrance doors was priority. Food and nutrition, Mr. Earl's begun the application process through the State Department portal for the CAFE program, which is known as the Summer Feeding Program. He'll be meeting with the Low Country Food Bank to identify areas for the summer meals. A lot of stuff going on in Transportation. Director Johnson received approval from the South Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles for our newly constructed bus pad out here for it to be used. So we've got all the approval to do the road test right here on site, which that's also a big deal. So we don't have to wait on space and go other places to do testing. The South Carolina Department of Education has issued four new diesel state school buses to DD4 as part of the replacement cycle in our older buses. These buses will go online once we get radios installed. And Transportation completed emergency evacuation drills yesterday at Clay Hill, and then today at Harleyville, Woodland Middle, and Woodland High School. And weather permitting, they'll do the ones at Williams Memorial tomorrow morning. Also, there's an update on holiday and spring break projects that were completed. And also, the work order summary dashboard in the end. And this will have a summer list next month of a very busy summer. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? I have one about the water. Because Mr. Harper, because April's almost over. Have they told you that they will be coming in April to get the water tapped down to Harleyville?
Are you talking about the...
Turning the water on for the Harleyville School, where they were running the lines down School House.
Oh, we have an entire project out there, because the main part of that is we have to bring in the emergency water. So that's still... We have permitting in Dorchester County right now. Once we get through that process, and they're reviewing all the architectural plans, the easy part is tying in the water. But now, we have to do fire egress lanes. We have to put hydrants in. It's a large project. So we're still looking at having that done by... Before opening them next year, so the end of summer. So that's a very tight timeframe, but we're hoping to have that tied in prior to going back in August. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Next up, Superintendent Report.
All right, so we have several overnight and out-of-state field trips. So I'm just going to go through each one, and then after we've gone through each one, if you have any questions on any specific one, please feel free to ask. And then you all can do a motion for some or all at the end. So the first one that we have is for our Special Olympics event. That's going to be an overnight trip for our students to be able to compete at the state level for the Summer Games for Special Olympics.
Where's that being held?
They've thrown so many different...
Fort Jackson.
Yep, up in Columbia. You know, they've had some things in... I know they were trying to work something out with Lugoff, Elgin, and some in the lower part of the state, but that will be the actual state meet. We have the middle school will be going to Carowinds for Education Day. It's just a regular one-day field trip. However, we know Carowinds is on both sides of the state, so we have to get approval there. We have FFA, our ag programs are going to be very busy over the next couple of months. They're going to the summer camp. This is the one that they generally go on or go to every year. And that's an overnight camp, and just a great experience for those students. It's up in Myrtle Beach. Our JROTC will be going to Fort Jackson and participating in different events and activities up there. And they've gone up there the last couple of years, and have performed exceptionally well. And our students really perform exceptionally. They do a great job, so we're excited for that one. We have another FFA camp here. One was for the middle school focus and one is high school focus. And that's why you have two separate ones. Seems like the same trip, but different age groups. Then we have the South Carolina FFA State Convention. That's the convention for our ag students. That'll be in June, the latter part of June. Excited for them to have the participation there. Ms. Leonard and Mr. Floyd are really doing an outstanding job getting them involved, both middle school and high school, so we can really develop that feeder program, that feeder pattern between both programs. I don't know if we've always had that, like we were building. Then we have the Convention Center, another event that is up in Greenville. That's for the ag program as well. That's for the ag program as well. Much of this is funded through the Career School. They will use Career School transportation for these trips. As you can see, our ag students will be extremely busy throughout the summer, really starting in May. Then we have our FCCLA, that is Always Travel in the World, it seems like, performing and participating at all sorts of things. Last month, you approved a trip to Anaheim for one of our students. This one is to go to Orlando for the National Leadership Conference. Excited for them to be able to participate. That's an annual thing that they attend, and again, always perform well, participate well, just really represent Dorchester Four, Woodland High School. Just a great experience for them. And that's it for now. I will say, as we get into the latter part of the school year, Ms. Smoke does a lot of this coordinating of this. Of course, it takes a lot of departments, but it all flows through Ms. Smoke. And right now, with these field trips, we're up to 160 field trips that our students have gone on this year. So there is, there is no doubt our students are getting off-campus and getting some great experiences, so this is just add-in to it.
All right, board members, this is eight field trips. All of them are in your packet to go over if you have any questions. Now would be a good time to ask them. If there are no questions, would you all like to just, go ahead?
We've got enough.
Chaperones? Yes, sir, the ten-to-one ratio is followed on each of these.
Would you all like to do them all together or individually? All together? Okay, all right.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the field trips as presented.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Evelyn and finger seconded by Ms. Jenny and finger. Are there any other questions? All in favor, please say aye or raise your right hand. All right, they are approved.
Wonderful, thank you. Next one, we had the second and final reading of Policies, Section G of the Policy Manual. This gets into your Personnel section. We are updating or adding or deleting based on what the School Boards Association recommends, policies that have been, most of them date back to 2000. So we're trying to get updated with that with more current policies. Again, this is the second and final reading, and we have a list of the ones that we would like to recommend for the final reading. We have to recommend, or we have our recommendation for four that we would be adopting that are new. We have one that we are looking to delete because it's being absorbed in other sections of the manual. And then we have several at the end. With everything going on at the federal level, we want to take a deeper look into those and make sure we're following all state and federal policy with that as things come down the chain to the local school districts. So we're asking to postpone those until the May reading so we can make sure we include our legal counsel on that discussion.
I'd like to do this in four motions, if you would, so that with the minutes and Ms. Stacy could keep them separated because there are four different categories. Is that good with y'all?
Madam Chairman, I might like to approve the Policies GA.
You don't have to state them all, she's got that list. You could just, that group right there, if you would.
The group right here that we approved, yes, ma'am.
So the motion is to approve these policies that are listed in this. To approve these. Second reading.
Second.
So Ms. Evelyn and fingers made the motion to approve the policies for our second reading, seconded by Mr. Folk. Are there any questions on this category? All in favor, please say aye or raise your right hand. Okay, those are approved.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend to adopt the policies in this group.
Motion made by Ms. Evelyn and finger seconded by Ms. Jenny and finger to recommend adoption of these four policies in this group. Are there any further questions? All in favor? They are approved.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to delete GBEC-dash-E.
Motion to delete GBEC-dash-E. Do we have a second? Folk, so a motion has been made by Ms. Evelyn and finger seconded by Mr. Folk to delete that policy. Any further questions? All in favor? It is unanimous.
And Madam Chairman, I recommend postponing the group of policies that we want to look over.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Evelyn, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Jenny and finger, so are there any further questions on that group? All in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, those are done.
Very much. All right, so the next thing we have, this was a intriguing piece of information here. So we have Mr. Fogel, I think he's here. Mr. Fogel, if you stand up, just be recognized by the board here, Eugene Fogel. So he's been hard at work on a project to do, get the old Jenkins Hill campus recognized as a historical site. And so he's done a lot of back work, and he brought this to us before we get it into the packets, so I wanted to bring it to you all here, simply because he's put a lot of work into it, and I wanted to see where we go with this, so. So this is information for you all to have, but it has the description that would be on the plaque that would be placed on the, where Odyssey Educational Center is now, the old Jenkins Hill Campus. You can see the inscription on there, and I'll even read it for you. Kennedy High School opened at this site in 1954-55. It served black families from Dorchester County School District Number Three, Harleyville, Ridgeville. About 700 students in grades one through 12 attended the first year. The brick facility cost around $300,000 and had over 20 classrooms, plus a library, athletic field, and gym. It was built through the state equalization program, which upgraded black schools in order to defend segregation. The school was named after its first principal, John D. Kennedy Jr. It was renamed Jenkins Hill High School upon the 1964 death of David A. Jenkins, the longtime principal of an older Jenkins Hill school that stood nearby before being replaced by the Equalization School. Jenkins Hill became the middle school in 1970-71 as a part of integration. It was later an elementary school and was demolished in the 2000s. So we can take this to discuss a little bit more in executive session because I know this is newer information for you all, but I think it's great information, Mr. Fogel, and appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I think anytime we can recognize history and our school district, I think that's great. So we'll talk more, and as I mentioned to you, I'll, we'll get back with you, okay? But I appreciate the work you've done. I know this has been a couple of years into working. Any questions from board on that?
It's exciting.
So what you have here is a letter from the Archives and History Department from South Carolina with some additional information, so. Thank you, Mr. Fogel. And then the last thing we have on here is a consolidation update. I know, Ms. Hughes, you wanted to mention something on this piece, but I will copy what Mr. Lewis said and thank our community, our board, our teachers, our staff, everybody involved in the process. It was wonderful to see the support, a united front at both meeting sessions, one down in Somerville, one up here. It really was wonderful to see the community together as one. So thank you very much, and I think Ms. Hughes will share a little more light on it, but I think we can all agree that every year, this is gonna come up. It has for the last 25 years, and that will not stop, but we'll continue to do the work that needs to be done and keep everybody informed the best that we can. But Ms. Hughes, I'll turn it over to you to share any information.
Like Mr. Lewis said, there's no bill been filed. I received a call, now in our end of the county, we have four house members. Justin Bamberg, from Bamberg, is the Grover area. Ms. Gildicob Hunter is our St. George area, and Ms. Hallman and Mr. Robbie split Harleyville and Ridgeville area. I received a call from Mr. Robbie Robbins, week before last, that it would not be filed in this session. So last week, I talked to Ms. Hallman to verify that, and she did verify it was paused. I said, "Is it not stopped?" No, it's paused. So Chris Murphy has not been back. He's the one that was going to file it, and so he wrote the drafted bill. So it's up to him to stop it, file it, or whatever. So I feel like when he comes back, like Mr. Lewis said, I do feel like it will come back. Tonight, our board is going to discuss doing a data study. They're saying that this is great for everybody, but no document has been proven whether it's beneficial or harmful to anybody, and we're up here to tell you that it is not beneficial for DD4. Very hurtful to DD4, and none of us want it. So we will stand strong, and we appreciate y'all standing with us because it's an uphill battle. So we will keep you informed, but the study needs to be done so that we have true facts as to what the facts are. Why is it not? Just saying it's not beneficial is not enough. You need proof. So we're gonna start with that, and then we will come up with a strategic plan to go forward. We will keep y'all informed and appreciate again what y'all are doing. I would encourage you, they are out of session on May the 8th, like Mr. Lewis said. You go online, look up their names, put them in as Representative Chris Murphy. It'll come up with his profile and his home address. I would advise everybody to keep writing. Just let them know, "We do not want this." And I think Mr. Lewis and I spoke today, and I believe he's gonna keep trying to get signatures on a petition. And if it comes up after the first of the year, I'd, I'll go to the House of Representatives myself with a group and stand up there and give them that petition and let them know that we do not want this. We're gonna try to fight it. We don't have the power to stop it, but we do have a power to vote. Just keep that in your mind. So we will keep you updated, I give you my word, we will keep you updated. So that's all, I wanted you to rest now because it has been paused. We've got a little bit of time, but we do have to keep pushing forward, so. And thank y'all again for all that you're doing. Appreciate it. So at this time, if there's nothing further from the board... Oh, yes, we do, the second page. Ms. Evelyn, the legislative update, thank you.
Good evening, just a couple of updates. I think the teacher's pay is in the governor's office now, and they're working on the year 2025-26 spending plan and the High School League. And if you want to get involved, if you have any concerns, what you do is write your representatives, and that will help, let them know how you feel about these bills.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. All right, well, at this time, the board will go into executive session to discuss student hearings, personnel matter, and legal matter. So at this time, I do need a motion to carry us into executive session.
Second?
All right, motion made by Ms. Jenny and finger seconded by Ms. Evelyn and finger to go into executive session. All in favor? We're now in executive session.